Okay, very good. We'd like to welcome everybody out to our council meeting tonight. We appreciate you being in attendance with us tonight. Um, we'd like to welcome those who are with us via the computer. We appreciate, uh, you being here with us as well. We will have our, uh, invocation denied by Councilmember Olton, after which I will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dearest Father in heaven, we're grateful to thee today that we can gather to, uh, discern for what may be best for the city and we pray that thou will attend us and help us to keep clear minds and be objective and do our best to make choices that will affect people of the city positively. We are grateful for the chance to live in this free country, to exercise the right to vote and pray that the, uh, hard feelings and the turmoil and arguments that have arisen during this election year will, that we can be Americans first and, uh, love our neighbors and, and do our best to get along. We express gratitude to thee for, uh, our healthcare workers who are doing their best to protect us from pandemic and pray for thy intervention to help those that are sick, that they may recover quickly and those that are researching, that they may come up with a way to protect us and we express gratitude to thee for all of our blessings and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Olton. Would everybody arise, please? Give the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may all be seated. Okay. A presentation of, uh, Police Department Shadow Box to Brigham from, uh, the Box Elder County Mayor's Association. And if we could have, uh, our chief and our assistant chief come up and, uh, Mayor, if you could come up as well and Gina? You're gonna come up too, right?
So, the, um, the Mayor's Association of, uh, and to help events, uh, doing shadow boxes for all of our police departments in the county to show, uh, how much we appreciate them, all that they do and, uh, the time that they step forth, uh, in protecting our freedoms, um...
Am I not, am I not loud enough? Oh, I wasn't speaking loud. Is that better? Can you hear that? Uh, in protecting our freedoms in our city and our country, um, we really appreciate our law enforcement and all that they do. Um, as you know, I have a, uh, a soft spot in my heart to Brigham City Police simply because my brother was our assistant chief and passed away a few years ago. Um, and he absolutely loved being a police officer. And, uh, our chief, our assistant chief are doing a phenomenal job as well, our officers and all the things that they do and the dedication that they put forth, not only in our community, but with allied agencies who need assistance as well. Uh, our, our county is great with law enforcement. We're, they're all willing to help one another and assist one another when we have emergencies or something that comes up and we truly appreciate law enforcement and all that they do and, and we just, we love them and appreciate, uh, their time and their dedication on behalf. So, I'd like to read what it says. It says, "Thank you for all you do, presented to Brigham City Police Department. Our definition of a hero is someone who protects our world and continues to make it a better place. Despite having to see its darkest aspects every day, our hero sleep on his or her badge every day and sacrifices more days than most do in an entire lifetime." We see you, we appreciate you and we truly are, you truly are a hero. Special thanks from the Box Elder Mayor's Association. And we appreciate our law enforcement. Thank you so much for all you do. Okay, we need some pictures. Again, thank you, uh, Chief, Chief and also Mayor's Association for, uh, that wonderful shadow box. We appreciate that. Um, some employees and then, uh, new hires in the public works. Brendan Cotter, Systems Operator. We appreciate him being willing to come to work for us and, and, uh, appreciate, uh, our employees stepping up and taking care of, um, our city. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent items presented.
And seconded.
Have a motion and seconded. Is there any further? All favor?
Aye.
Okay, under consent items. Uh, request for approval of the 10-15-2020 Council, City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I need to do these individually? Okay. But we do need to do a roll call, correct?
On all the action items.
Okay. We probably ought to do a motion and a roll call then for...
Mayor, I motion to, um, approve all the consent items.
Second. Have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, we will have a roll call and we'll start with Councilmember, uh, Thompson. Councilmember Peterson.
He's been off the, sorry.
Off the counter for a while. I'm Tom Denai. Thank Tom.
Alden's an aye.
Robbins an aye.
Joe's aye.
Thank you very much. I'd like to, I'd like to say it's my glasses fogging up. Okay, we will now go into our public comment period, uh, and, uh, we will have, uh, comments from our citizens, those who, uh, are residents, those paying taxes or that can, uh, vote in our city. So, we will go to that point. There is, uh, a public comment period. We will go to our council member comments and we will start with, let's start with Alden tonight.
Mayor, thank you. Had a, uh, meeting with the, uh, Airport Advisory Board today and, um, lot of, lot of good things happening. I, I know Tyler had, uh, expressed some appreciation to, um, the group, uh, that's been helping to, um, map out a, I guess, a plan, a long-term plan for additional hangars and our electric coal and water sewer and, uh, he was just very appreciative of, uh, JBA, JV Aviation. I hope I got that right, that, and all the work that they have done to kind of help the city for, for future development out there at the airport. So, uh, outside of that, uh, that's all I have.
Well, our airport's doing very well. We're very happy with our airport.
I have nothing to, to report.
Councilmember Olson?
I also have nothing to report.
Councilmember Trockso?
Um, I attended the Wasatch Grant Regional Choice Workshop. Um, since I'm new, I'm just trying to get caught up, I think, on all of that and so I learned a lot through that. A lot has been happening the last few years and so it was good to, to kind of get attached to where everybody's at with that. Um, I also attended the Main Street Program Training Session, um, for that grant with, um, the Economic Development Department and it was, it was, um, kind of this their first planning vision session. Um, I don't think it was attended by as many businesses as needed to be, but I think that the ones that did attend do have a lot of information and, and, um, are really invested into our Main Street Program and so I think that'll be a success. Um, I've been listening to a lot of the updates on the Utah League of City and Towns. They do some really good, um, updates on things like that. The last one was with the head of the Utah Hospital Association asking please to, that, um, this Corona is going to Corona, that's what my kids call it, the Corona. Um, COVID-19 is, uh, gonna be very dire, um, on the hospitals in the next few weeks and so, um, just ask people to please be careful and to try to mitigate this transmission of the virus as much as you possibly can. Um, I also attended Bear River Association of Governments, um, Human Resources Meeting. Went over the Strategic Planning and Community Action Plan Update. The only thing that, that really kind of affects us is, um, usually every year they have a pot of, um, SSBG grants that they hand out and they chose this time to hold the money. Um, we did give fifty thou, or thirty thousand to Brad for their, um, transportation home weatherization program because it's coming wintertime. And then we'll look at, go further down the road. And I think that's it.
Very good. Hi, uh, I wa, I attended that, uh, Wasatch Grant thing for the county as well, but, uh, I have a little problem. My computer, I couldn't, I couldn't speak. Got on, you couldn't, I couldn't figure out, anyway. And at first I couldn't even hear anything. I'm just seeing everybody's mouths and I'm like, okay, what's wrong with this thing? So, I settled with it. Anyway, so I did get something out of there, but, uh, it was tough, so. I guess I need to practice a little bit. I have some problems with, uh, viewing church things sometimes that way as well, so, but anyway. I just, uh, you know, it's, it's interesting, uh, with what's going on and, and the numbers increasing, uh, Chris Howard, our emergency manager and our assistant chief has been working diligently with this. Um, I were, I think, just, I just think it's, uh, I just think our younger people, um, are getting together and doing, not that it's horrible, but what we're getting together instead of being careful. I think we're kind of strong caution to win and then, uh, mom and dad are getting sick and so, yeah, we just, I agree with Councilmember Trockso. We just need to be careful and cautious where we go and what we do and just be careful, so, but. Well, we have the, we have that and we have the turmoil with what's going on in Washington and so, um, I just would, um, ask those that are in the sound of my voice and I'm not only in this room, but also that are here with us through the, uh, the computer, if they would, um, we just need to be kind. We need to realize that there's a, a lot of stress in our, going on in our country right now. Domestic violence is up and, uh, people are scared. It's scary times. Um, I would just ask that, that we're courteous to others around us and, um, that we, uh, look for maybe those who are struggling or those who are having a hard time and, and, um, reach and do something for them and, and, uh, render aid where aid is needed. So, we live in a great community of great people who care and, uh, are concerned about others and, uh, we just need to make sure that, uh, we, we reach out and help those who maybe struggling or may need a, a welcome hand and, and, uh, visit with them and, and them through these times, so. Anyway, Council, I appreciate you and all that you do, your dedication, your dedication to, uh, our city. And, uh, we appreciate all the boards that you sit on and, and all the work that goes on, so we thank you for what you do. Grateful for our staff, um, and, uh, and their dedication that they do as well, so. Okay, under actions. Consideration of Approval of an Interlocal Agreement Between Brigham City Corporation and Brigham City Redevelopment Agency for the 1100 South Community Development Project Area and Paul Larson's gonna discuss that with us. Are you here, Paul? There he is.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes. Um, just to start off with, there are a number of items on the agenda tonight that are, uh, fairly interrelated involving the 1100 South Community Development Project Area. Uh, we also have an action item on, uh, the development agreement for the Brigham Crossing Project, uh, within that project area. So, just to kind of introduce a little background to this, um, we spoke not too long ago about the 1100 South Community Development Project Area. Um, are you able to see my screen? Is that? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this is a, a graphic that shows the boundaries of the 1100 South Community Development Project Area. That project area was created back in 2009 and it was a joint effort between Brigham City and Perry City. On this map, you see, uh, a boundary in red. That's the portion of the project area that's in Brigham City. And then you see a portion of it that's in blue. That is the portion that's within Perry. The crosshatched areas, both in red and in blue, are areas that are excluded from the project area for purposes of tax increment collection, um, because they were already built outs and, uh, there was no benefit to including them in the project area. Um, recently, we did an interlocal agreement with the Perry City, uh, Redevelopment Agency where we essentially separated the operations and oversight management of, of the two project areas. So, now we're, we're just looking at the Brigham City portion tonight. Uh, and so this is the, the map of that portion that just shows the Brigham City, uh, area. So, the request tonight is for approval of an interlocal agreement between the Brigham City Council and the Brigham City Redevelopment Agency that would allow the redevelopment agency to receive tax increment from projects that are developed within the project area. And similar, uh, uh, interlocal agreements will be presented to the other taxing entities. The county actually approved their agreement last night. And on the redevelopment agency, excuse me, you'll see a, um, re, a resolution that would approve the form of the interlocal agreements with the other taxing entities. Uh, and it would allow us to then complete those and get them signed. Uh, the first one, of course, being the one with the county last night. The second one will be, uh, with the city council tonight. Um, on, there's, um, let me pull up the, the actual agreement. Let's see. This is participation agreement. There we go. Now, that's participation. Um, so on the form of the interlocal agreement, there were a couple of corrections. One thing that the county asked for was to include a exhibit showing the boundary, the, the map that I just, uh, was showing you. And so that's, um, that's been added. So, it will include this exhibit at the end. And then up at the top, there was a correction. There, there's, this is, we've added this so that it, it references the exhibit a, and then there was a, a correction by the county attorney to the code reference, uh, with subsection sixty-one instead of sixty. So, those are a couple of edits made since last night and, um, at this point, if you have questions about this, I'd be happy to try and answer them. This hopefully is, um, it can get into the weeds a little bit, uh, with what tax increment is and, and so on, but it's, it's a financing mechanism that allows us to direct funding into, uh, development projects and infrastructure to, uh, support and encourage development of the area.
Any question? There's no questions. I need a motion.
Mayor, I move that we would approve the interlocal agreement between Brigham City Corporation and Brigham City Redevelopment Agency for the 1100 South Community Development Project Area.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not? We need a roll call and we'll start with Councilmember Olton.
Joe.
Tom's aye.
Alden's an aye.
Robbins an aye.
Good, thank you very much. Consideration of an Amendment to Upland Square Development Agreement to change name to Brigham Crossing. Mark Bradley, and I think you're gonna do that one too, are you not, Paul? Or is Mark with us?
I am present, Mayor. Yes, I'll go ahead and, uh, pull up this slide. So, the, uh, development agreement, Paul made some reference to the agreement. Uh, it was initially entered into in, in 2009 under Upland Square. And, uh, since that time, there's been a change of ownership and, and reference of the area. And so the new owners, uh, and, and we do have Ryan Wild, I believe, that's, uh, also available for questions, uh, representing the, the ownership of the property. But, uh, there are a few things they'd like to, to update and, and make some current changes. And so, uh, I'll go through it quickly and just identify the sheets that you have. Uh, by state, by Utah Code, uh, communities are able to enter into development agreements to help direct development and to, uh, establish, uh, terms of, of the ability for the developer to proceed and have vested certain rights and, and for the city to be able to negotiate with them initially what they would like and expect of that area. And so that's what took place here. And so, uh, the, the proposal is to amend it and change the name to the Brigham Crossing. And so the red line, uh, text references the name and then there'd be a name change of ownership from the Bear River Flats to the NJR Brigham City, which are the current owners. Uh, there's been a modification in the acreage because they have sold, uh, about, uh, it was, it was close to about eleven acres to UTA in the corner. We'll show that in the map. And then, uh, there's some, just some clarification on, uh, just the residential. So, it's not all references multifamily. There is some potential for, for single family in that area. And then moving on, uh, this is just to clean up on this page as, as far as ownership in reference to the original agreement. As we proceed, this page is the same thing. Uh, there, there's a change of, of contact here with the individuals from Brigham City and Perry City. Now Perry City still has, um, even though they're originally, the, the original owners had a development agreement with this Brigham City and also Perry City. The Perry City agreement, my understanding, no longer exists, but, uh, because of the, the connection and, and, uh, relationship with, with, uh, the communities, we continue to, to keep Perry involved in part of this, uh, reference as far as communication with the project. And then again, here's a change to the ownership addressing. And it, and then I'm just gonna keep moving right through. So, this is the update with the legal description, from the old legal description. Here is the area. Within that Brigham Crossing area, UTA has purchased this northwest portion and there still continues to be a little portion of property owned by Parsons that the owners are, are working with. All right. This gets into the land use regulations. For the most part, uh, it's, it remains the same, but again, just the change of the name and also, uh, the reference of the commuter rail station with the approval of city council. And then as we get into, you not listed, oh, uh, excuse me, as we get into the, the original agreement, uh, restricted, uh, the majority of the residential to a twenty-five acre area and the request is to be able to allow up to thirty acres with the housing, but, uh, reverse the, the density down from thirty acres per unit to twenty-five so that that way you still have the same overall number of maximum number of dwelling units in the project. This just provides a little more flexibility with the wetland area and the street design with the project. Uh, it also references clarified that, uh, half the units, uh, need to be platted to allow for potential homeownership and not just for rentals or lease. And then it clarifies that with the housing, uh, with the condominiums, independent living and single-family homes. With, with this too, going back to 2009 really quick, you know, that was the time when there was a lot of focus on the, the big box stores and a lot of commercial has changed. You just don't see the, the large development like that with the big box stores. All right, uh, as we move on, this Exhibit C is dealing with the Master Street and Development Plan. The lower section of this, it referenced that, that the, the residential was primarily in the southwest corner of the project and it just, it references that, that the city acknowledges due to the wetland areas, uh, that there's a need to be able to have, uh, some of the residential brought up closer to 1100, uh, South and 1100 West. And the acreage is, is changed there from the twenty-five to the thirty acres. And then the, then again, uh, the reference with the overall acreage. And then, uh, there was, there's new, uh, language regarding 1100 West that it would be fully improved according to the, this city engineer's specifications to be consistent with Perry City right away. You, you'll probably, if you've read through some of the minutes, there was a reference where there was be coordination between the two cities before we got to this part, this point in the process. And, um, and that has taken place. There's still work to be done, but, um, we've had meetings, a meeting with Perry City and with our engineers, with the applicant to address these roads. And then, uh, number five, there are two, the, the amended, uh, master plan, uh, has two main roads coming. You have the primary road and then kind of a secondary. And basically, number five is, is referencing that it will all be developed at one time within that Phase One. Originally, uh, the secondary road was being proposed as a road base for construction and then, uh, improved at a later time with a timeframe that would trigger the asphalt in that uh, because it was more of a, a construction route that would become a, a secondary road that would primarily service the residential so that you'd have the, the primary road would be the commercial, secondary would be the residential, and now they're both being proposed to be developed at the same time in Phase One. Uh, these are just some cleanup items. And then Exhibit D, that's just the, the existing 1100 South Design Guidelines, Guidelines as a reference. So, these are the changes, uh, being proposed with... So these are the changes uh, being proposed with. So again, there's really kind of five key things. One, the official name change, the update to ownership. The reference to the commuter rail station, which we realize with studies now, I mean, it may be a different type of, of uh, transportation uh, that UTA would provide, but UTA has acquired that property now. A revised language regarding location of housing and um, allow amendment to the master street and development plan for the proposed new plan. Uh, the, this development agreement was presented to the planning commission back in, in two thousand and nineteen. And um, they had, the, the applicant, uh, as they working through with the time and it's, it's, it's taken some time to get to this point. But the planning commission uh, ultimately made a recommendation for uh, approval to the city council, uh, subject to authorizing and encouraging staff to work with the applicant to resolve the B item, uh, section B four and, and B five, which we read in exhibit C, a little more in details, uh, and in accordance with the findings of fact as listed in the memorandum. I don't know if you'd like to uh, address this item, or if you want me just to go ahead and go into the road master plan and, and go with that, and then maybe come back and do uh, separate motions for each of these two applications. Would that be beneficial to the council?
Counsel, what do you want to do?
You know what, I'm, I'm fine either way.
I think we're fine either way, Mark. I, I think, are, are we prepared just to vote on this one, or do you want to hear the rest of them first?
I, in, in reading through everything, I mean, it seems like a lot of the work's been done. All we're doing is name changes and a few miscellaneous things. I, I'm pretty comfortable just going, going, going ahead and voting myself.
Councilmember Peterson, how do you feel?
I'm good.
Okay, that's it. Let's, let's, I enter, let's entertain a motion and we'll go on then.
Mayor, I would move that we uh, uh, amend the Upland Square Development Agreement to change the name to Brigham City Crossing. Or excuse me, Brigham Crossing.
Second. Have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? A roll call vote. We'll start with Councilmember Troxel.
Joe's eye.
Tom's eye.
Alden's an eye.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, consideration of amendment uh, to Brigham City Crossing Master Street and Development Southwest Corner of eleven hundred south and eleven hundred west, Mark Bradley.
Okay. So here is the current master street plan development, uh, master street and development plan that was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. So again, you have the agreement that was uh, passed or entered in two thousand and nine. And then it, it went through kind of a change of ownership and they, they got this plan approved because that's a requirement as part of the development agreement. And then there's been a change of ownership with our, with our current group. And so I just wanted to kind of show that transition. And then this, excuse me, this was what was initially presented uh, to the Joint Advisory Board, which is um, a board that consists of three planning commissioners from Brigham City and three from Perry City. And they're a recommending body to each city's uh, plan that's within that area where the two boundaries come together. And so this was uh, presented before that body. And in the blue is that primary road that would service the commercial. And the yellow would be the future residential, but was initially gonna be the construction. And that's the one that, that I tried to explain with the development agreement that ultimately this is where we're at now with the revised amendment that's before you, where all the roads are blue. This is, the little yellow, it was more shown a left turn and just a, a carryover from the, the map. It's not signifying any, anything different, but the blue lines are uh, are the roads that would be developed in phase one. And there would be a new road section coming south of the, the roundabout. And in the orange area, you can see is, is primary, the, the residential, kind of a mixed type of, of residential. And then your, your reddish colors, the, the commercial. And then the purplish area, it doesn't quite follow exactly how uh, the commercial is, but that's the, the portion that was purchased by a UTA. And they are identifying, uh, there is a, a historic orchard pathway uh, that has been a, it's a plan that was put together between the communities here in South Box Elder County. Where this uh, ten-foot trail would, would come up through from Willard to Perry into Brigham City. And so they're identifying that trail in lieu of a, it would be a, a concrete trail in lieu of a sidewalk in that area. Then they would also develop a blacktop trail along the north a portion of the property along eleven hundred south as, as part of the project. So this uh, master street and development plan will help guide uh, development as the, the property owners work with uh, bringing in people to do out the site. And you'll notice the, the black arrows is showing how there'd be some key connectivity with Perry City. Uh, and then also they have identified where there can be a potential railroad crossing uh, or into the Perry side, on the west side of the railroad. Uh, but they acknowledged that would be uh, primarily, I guess, uh, promoted by Perry City for that work to be done. That's to provide that access, but they're, they're identifying where that could take place. And so with that said, uh, the, the joint advisory board, uh, as I mentioned, made a recommendation to the, the planning commission. And then the planning commission uh, made a positive recommendation to the city council uh, with a five oh vote to uh, recommend approval subject to addressing the staff comments, the, the staff recommendations and the stipulations, including the joint advisory board recommendations, which included the engineering department's comment, which was regarding the railroad crossing, uh, changing UTA to UP, the Union Pacific Railroad. Something must, it was a typo on their plan. And then, and subject to Perry City being responsible to address the railroad crossing with the findings of fact as noted in your memorandum. And just a few clarifying uh, comments that this plan is still subject to uh, obtaining their wetland clearance permit or letter from the Army Corps, uh, that the uh, uh, we explained that the nature of the yellow road. And I believe those are the main items on that uh, recommendation before you. So what you're seeing here is the amended master street and development plan for the Brigham Crossing uh, development area.
Okay, great. Get lead motion.
I've got some questions.
Okay.
Um, the, the road width, Mark, one of the biggest complaints I get, I know it wasn't the city that, that dictated the width, but is, is the issue with the road width, um, by wingers and uh, that area. I, I get a lot of comments back that the city screwed up in allowing that road to be so narrow. So I'm just curious. It looks to me like we have a potential for a high volume of traffic on these roads. Do we, do we feel like they're wide enough? Uh, I, I think the sixty-six foot is pretty standard for our east and west running roads in the city. Uh, but I'm just wondering if they're, if that was discussed and what your thoughts are.
Yeah, the, the nature of uh, this, this will definitely be a better situation than the private street that was uh, developed there, as you mentioned, out in front of Walmart. And the nice thing here is, is the connectivity as well, that the, that the uh, property owners are identifying the importance of, with their project. And so the, the goal here with their primary road being a sixty is, is to have more of a commercial feel where you're bringing the building and the design closer to the street. So it creates a little more walkability. Um, the, the south road would be the sixty-six that would be your, that would service, you know, more into the residential and getting it out, back out to eleven hundred west and working with the engineering department and, and first Jones Associates also uh, services Perry City. But uh, we felt pretty comfortable with these right of ways. Um, we're certainly uh, supportive to uh, any direction or, or consideration that the council has on that, um, if, if there needs to be further discussion or consideration that would be part of the approval. Um, but at this point, uh, uh, up to this point, uh, I felt pretty comfortable with the design and the connectivity that it's not just all. I mean, it's still, there's a lot of east-west motion in the traffic flow, but there's, there's gonna be a lot of more connectivity with the efforts that are being made that distributes that traffic uh, in areas that, that service the nature of, of what the road should, should be.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, I do have a question. Um, were that red line, or that um, entrance, is, is there any plan, would that be the city's responsibility or the developers to go uh, east to tie into that um, road that Tom was referring to that uh, goes past the, all those businesses and would continue out west? Did, did that make sense?
Yes, I, I follow you. That's a good question. Uh, that, so uh, it's, it's basically eleven fifty. It's a private street. Uh, that segment uh, is really the responsibility of the developer. And there's, there's been off and on discussion. Um, Shirley Peck, uh, her, her group owns that property and as she sells it or develops, they would be the ones that would be the ones who would develop that street. But it would come back at five hundred feet back from eleven hundred south. And that was what uh, was determined initially for this eleven hundred west with UDOT. And that's what the city's gonna continue to, to support for that main connection so that you have a pro, a more appropriate uh, stacking and queuing of traffic as a, as you have the right and left turnouts and everything like that. But that would be development driven, I guess, in short.
Okay. Any more questions, Tom?
Well, you, you, I guess you bring up another question I have. Would they at least put curb and gut drain on that east side of that uh, eleven hundred west?
My understanding, according to the agreement that was the one before here is that they would uh, complete uh, that portion um, according to the city standards. So, so there would, well, it's, it's built up to this point, excuse me, right now. And so they would build the rest of the area. And then um, this would be finalized with Perry, but basically um, they would portion on Brigham City, which is gonna be quite wide because it's a hundred and, it was a hundred and six foot wide right of way. So that they would, the, the anticipation, they would build the full width down to where the, the boundary line jogs. And then uh, at that point, try to work with Perry, get the full road in at the same time. If not, then to be able to do a wide enough portion that it still services adequate traffic coming in and out for the south road until such time the road continues on through, through Perry City. I, I should show, let me get, here's the property ownership. So Perry has, has done a great job um, acquiring the, the property. So they are in ownership now to be able to have that eleven hundred west extend down, which will tie into their twelve hundred west. So they have the property uh, reserved for that road. So it's just, it's just a matter of timing with that, with the road. Yeah.
Silly question, Mark, but is that, is that gonna be the, uh, the same width as the current that's existing now?
So I, I can't recall exactly where um, they're gonna taper down. But my understanding is, is it will taper to a, a narrow section. I can't recall the actual right of way that Perry City has. If it's, if it goes from a hundred and, so ours is a hundred and six that will go from, from this point all the way up to SR thirteen uh, along twelve hundred west. Uh, but I think they do taper down. I can't remember if it's like an eighty in some feet, and I'm just not sure where it tapers down as well. I can't recall. Uh, it may be a little further south. But it seemed like they, they were down.
I just want, wonder if there's, there's gonna be uh, enough traffic or too much traffic. Uh, I don't know that road that's just south of Walmart that kind of bends around and then goes into Perry, if that's adequate, or if there's, you know, if they have problems with that in, in terms of the width and if that would be the case on this new road that would tie into that, uh, so. Guess that's not my, our problem.
And, and it's been part of the, uh, you know, part of the, on the Wasatch Front Regional Council, our, our, our master plans for that whole connection from Willard all the way up to the airport road.
Yeah, okay. Mayor, I would move that we approve the amendment to Brigham Si, uh, to Brigham Crossing Master Street and Development Plan on the southwest corner of eleven hundred south and eleven hundred west.
There are motions, second. Is there any further discussion? We need a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilmember Troxel.
Robbins an eye.
Joe's an eye.
Tom's eye.
Alden's an eye.
Okay, consideration of an ordinance changing zone, zoning from R dash one eight residential district to R dash M dash seven multiple residential district for the area located between four hundred and five hundred south streets and five hundred and six hundred west streets. And Mark's gonna talk to us about that?
Yes, I'll just pull up the slide here. All right, so here is the uh, general plan at the top and the zoning map at the, the lower portion of the, the screen. And so with the uh, the general plan update in two thousand and seventeen, these lower, well, actually, when I say lower, about, the, the lower medium residential blocks were included in that medium residential designation. And, and so as you look down here, you still have some R one eight remaining between the RM fifteen and the general commercial. But uh, so the, the black rectangle area is the subject block. To the northwest is the Box Elder High School. And so you can see the R one eight. And so uh, it, the proposals, the RM seven uh, district, and so there'd be a, a, a step transition down from the RM fifteen to the RM seven to the R one eight, which is ideal and we have that uh, pattern throughout the community. And so uh, here is the block that identifies the, the area. And then uh, as part of it, so the, the key in, in rezoning in an area like that is, is to have as, as much uniform and transition uh, with, with that. So you're not just creating, um, obviously, we've talked about spot zones with this property before, uh, and, and other projects. And even, I mean, if you, if you can have a, a transition with a, a large chunk of property at one time, so it's a uniform transition, that's the goal. And so Mr. Hyde was uh, advised to, to reach out and, and make contact with, with everyone in the block and make that effort first and then identify the support and, and how that would work so that the planning commission could uh, consider that recommendation onto the city council. And so in doing so, out of twenty-two property owners, um, the applicant was able to get nineteen of the twenty-two to sign and notarize signatures s- signed uh, that became part of the application supporting the rezone from the R one eight to the RM seven. And this uh, identifies the ownership, the parcels a- and the uses of the property. So there's actually two duplexes in this block. The applicant has one. And, and in the interest of his rezone petition is to allow for um, a legal triplex with the property. And by the, by getting the rezone to the RM seven, that would qualify for a triplex on that property. The other duplex is a, is a legal nonconforming, uh, meaning it, it's not large enough uh, for the, I mean, it's existing, uh, and it's still smaller than you'd typically be required for two dwellings on one lot. You can see at the bottom of the page how much square footage in a lot that you'd need to qualify for uh, increased dwellings. And so um, I'll just identify here is the property ownership with the, the county record. And so, um, I'll just identify here is the property ownership with the, the county records. And so you can see with the, the three yellow areas are the ones that did not sign the, uh, the petition for the rezone, but they're spread throughout. And so that, that was part of the consideration the Planning Commission had. The, the applicant is, uh, just below the center of the block, the larger parcel here. And so, um, hi- his neighbor to the south, and we have not heard, uh, he, he reached out to, to her. Um, and notices have gone to all the property owners within the block and also the three hundred notice around the block. Uh, Mr. Crittison was not necessarily opposed, but he, he wanted to do some more due diligence with how that rezoning would affect his property and check with the county assessors. And, uh, Ms. Nysenger was at the Planning Commission meeting. Uh, came later in the meeting, um, and mi- and missed the public hearing portion, but spoke with the planning chair afterwards. And, uh, it sounded like not necessarily opposed to the rezone, just wanted to make sure that parking was addressed with the additional units i- is the feedback that I received. And so with that said, uh, the Planning Commission, again, in their consideration and, and, and it's important as they, they look at how the zoning expands and, uh, they recommended to the city council that the entire block be rezoned, uh, to the RM seven, uh, finding that it's, uh, consistent with the general plan. And, uh, that comes with the six oh foe and, uh, with the noted findings of facts that are listed in your staff evaluation.
Mark, how does this affect their property values?
My understanding and, and we've advised any, we've, we received a few calls, uh, advise them to contact the county assessor's office directly because we do not wanna misrepresent how that would happen. But, uh, it, it really should be, the assessment of your property and taxes should be based on your actual use. Uh, even though the zoning provides that increase there, some of them are still limited to a single-family dwelling. And so they should be assessed and taxed according to that use. So it should not, uh, impact them that way. What it does provide, obviously, uh, you know, the applicant, it allows him to increase from the, uh, duplex. Again, that was a, a legal non-conforming duplex, non-conforming as far as, you know, a single-family zone. So, but that allows him a third unit by meeting some cer- certain standards and providing additional parking and, and screening that's required. Uh, it would allow for the Sumner to potentially split his lot into two. I guess he, he could have actually done that under the R one eight, but he has potential there. The Hamilton has some potential. But the majority will still be single-family, uh, because of the size of the lot. I'll go back to that little breakdown. Under this, un- unless, unless our, uh, standards change to allow an increased density in time under the current code, uh, those are the numbers that you need to meet in order to qualify for two dwelling or three dwellings. And, and, and you also have to provide, you know, two off-street parking for each unit. And when you create, uh, an additional unit by building code now, you need to have separate heating and air for health purposes. So you're not sharing. Now, there's a lot of grandfather basement apartments back in the sixties when they were, some were permitted throughout the community, uh, with the different electrical meters, uh, granted, things like that. But under current code, i- it's, it's critical for that health code to be considered. But, uh, part of the, what we're seeing, obviously, is the transition of, of the need for housing and housing options. Um, I, I think Councilman Peterson brought up at last meeting or, or two meetings ago, a hot topic of accessory dwelling units. And those things will just need to be considered. How we continue to look at, uh, addressing housing in our community. I, I hope to answer your question. I didn't mean to just ramble, but.
No, no, that was, that was actually really good, but let me see if I can restate it so that I am clear that I understand. If, if you're not planning on changing anything with your property, your property value should not change. If you continue as a single residence property, it should be valued the same.
Now, your, your property value, when they do assessments, you know, just how things, just like today with the, um, housing market, can definitely increase, uh, how our taxes are. But you should not be taxed for, um, based on the RM seven versus the R one eight. You should be based on a single-family dwelling versus a two-family dwelling.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed.
Hey, Mark, I, I may be a little bit off topic, but I've got a question. I am currently drafting state legislation to deal with ADUs and how they're, how they will be impacted as far as the building code goes. But I'm, I'm wondering, uh, in an R one eight, uh, would, excuse me, we're gonna have to allow those accessory dwelling units in those R one eight areas, aren't we? I'm just trying, I know it's off topic, but just.
No, you're fine. Uh, yeah, that's what's being considered is, is you'd in the R, or the R, R one ten. Uh, the question's, what are the standards? And we haven't gotten that point yet, but our planning consultant, Bruce Parker, who has met, is working with us, uh, he favors, you know, that the AC, ADUs will help kind of bring those, those other, uh, basement apartments to, to light as far as legalizing them. But we, we kind of recognize a lot of them as, if they've been granted and they're recognized by the city as a legal non-conforming use already. But the, the question is, yeah, really, how do we, how do you incorporate that into a single-family zoning or a neighborhood when people buy into those areas? Uh, thinking you have some kind of protection that you're gonna be amongst the single-family dwellings and not, uh, uh, you know, multi-family units. And, um, and so there's a lot of, there's several, there's, there's quite a number of cities, I should say, that have adopted standards. Uh, it's obviously a national trend and, and Utah has embraced it quite a bit, uh, throughout a lot of the communities, especially with the housing needs and, uh, cost of living, that the challenge is some of those mother-in-law apartments and different things like that. They're, there's, people are in, in the Salt Lake and Utah County, they're, they're charging more than many of us pay for our mortgage right now, which is... So I'm, I'm not sure that we're seeing a, a relief in the cost for renters yet and how that would handle, be handled. But, uh, the key is, is how it will be done so it's, it's not impacting neighborhoods, but being a benefit and a service to the community rather than an impact.
Got you. Thank you.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the ordinance change zoning from a R one eight residential district to, uh, RM seven multiple residential district for area located between four hundred and five hundred South Street and five hundred and six hundred West Street.
Second.
We have a motion at second. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilmember Peterson. Tom's an eye.
Alden's an eye.
Robbins an eye.
Jones eye.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, consideration of an ordinance to amend chapter three dot zero three, uh, Brigham City facilities. And, uh, Jason Robertson's gonna discuss that with us.
I may have turned it off, too.
Okay. Um, this one should be fairly more straightforward. We, we're just wanting to clean up some language in title three of our zoning code talking about the use of Brigham City facilities. Specifically, we have changed how internally how Bowerys or, they were scheduled by the public works department. Now will be done by the community act services department. There's some clarification language in here that talks about no political activity is allowed by employees using assets of the city. There's some language about that. It removes a lot of language to the rental of the Herb and Bunderson Center since we no longer are renting the Herb and Bunderson Center and it's not available for rent. Uh, there is a clause in there that would allow the rental of the Academy Building year's eve only to go till twelve thirty AM. And that's the biggest things in here. And I welcome any questions you have about it.
Okay, very good. Council, there's no questions?
Jason, uh, I, I don't have any questions, uh, just for note of, I guess, to be concerned, uh, on some of the, uh, you're talking, uh, on page one eleven, it talks about, uh, the Bowery and the, has the bounce house. And it's, uh, insta- it shows the dis- discovery growth instead of changing that to the Davis. So I don't know if, I mean, it's not a big deal, but if you wanted to keep that consistent, that, uh, that probably would need to be changed. And then there was, uh...
Absolutely.
And then I think it was on page one twenty-two, it, it, when it did a repeat, it was, again, that was just over. So, I might wanna get corrected.
Yeah, we would welcome those changes. That was overlooked inadvertently.
Oh, I would, we approve the ordinance amending chapter three point oh three to the Brigham City facilities, including the changes that Councilmember Farr recommended.
You have a motion in the second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilmember, uh, Farr.
Alden's an eye.
Robbins an eye.
Jones eye.
Tom's eye. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Councilmember Farr, for catching up. Okay, consideration of a resolution authorizing the approving adjustment for, or prove, adjustment of the participants entitlement share under the CFPP power cells contract.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just checking to make sure you can hear me correct.
Yes, we can hear you, Dave.
Okay, yeah, it was hard to read in there and it's gonna be probably just as, uh, complicated to maybe explain. I'm gonna try and put this in the most simplistic form, uh, or right off from the start, and then we can go from there. So, um, basically what this resolution is, is, uh, a relationship between, um, our megawatts in, in our participation with the CFPP project, the carbon-free power project, and the cost cap that, uh, Brigham City has the appetite to participate in. Um, our, our megawatt, uh, um, the, a request that we want is fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty KW, uh, kilowatts, that's in kilowatts, fifteen point two five in megawatts. And in our past, uh, council meetings, we've, uh, basically approved a, a one point three million dollar spend cap, um, within that project to, um, fit within that fifteen point two five, um, megawatts. The, the, we're, we're in an off-ramp period at this point. And at this point, um, if we were to get out, um, for convenience, our, uh, cost would be three hundred ninety-seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars. I think, uh, on our last meeting, we elected to stay in the project at that. Um, and moving forward, the next budget that was gonna go to January of twenty twenty-two was gonna be a budget of, um, three point two, uh, I apologize, I've got a lot of papers in front of me, three point two million dollars approximately, um, which out of that, we were gonna be responsible for approximately one point nine million dollars, which exceeded our one point three million dollar cap that we originally agreed on. In looking at this project, um, the, the problems, the problems that we were looking at, um, we had eight cities drop out, um, from this project, and some big, some of them small. Looking at what the issues were with the, uh, cities dropping out, um, it was a little bit worrisome, but finding out, getting down to the root cause of, of, of what the dropout was, it was not tied, um, to the confidence of the, uh, technology of the project. It was not tied for the majority. It was not tied, and I'm gonna say for the majority, 'cause some did not speak. But it was not tied to the, um, um, technology competence or nor was it tied to the confidence of the, uh, UAMPS team that was, UAMPS and the team that was put together to do this project. The, the reason why the majority of those cities dropped out was because of lack of subscription to what would seem to be an, an obvious solution to a carbon-free baseload energy product that would last us forty, fifty, sixty, eighty years. And, and that was what, what caused, uh, those cities to drop out. Um, so going back and looking at that thirteen point two million dollar budget, um, the project management committee, which I'm a board member of, we talked to the UAMPS staff and said, okay, we've got a problem here because we are not getting subscription to this project. What do we need to do? What do we need to look at? What, what's gonna be the, um, what do we need to do to get there? And, and what they decided to do is that we needed to sort of push a bit of a pause button, buttoned. What they decided to do is that rather than go full bore ahead with everything the way that was going with that thirteen point two million dollar, that we would back that off, that we would back that down to a four million dollar budget. And it's, it just, and it's gonna go the, the same time span. It's gonna go from November of, uh, actually starting next Wednesday in our board meeting of, of twenty to January of twenty twenty-two, which would have been the same time period as our class three estimate that that thirteen point two million dollar budget was going to cover. Um, that's been shaped down from a three point two million dollar budget to a four million dollar budget. And the focus of that four million dollar budget, the main focus of that four million dollar budget is going to be to get subscription to this project and, and to get that back up. Now, two, two factors have factored in, um, that I think that if you wanna talk about mature conversation between, uh, municipalities that dropped out, before they dropped out, some of them, the, the three, uh, or one point three five five million dollar grant from the DOE had not been appropriated yet. And the LLC, which allows non-tax exempt entities to participate in this project, had not been developed yet. And some of those municipalities had dropped out at that point and are still out. Since then, those have obviously come in. The one point three five five point billion dollar DOE grant will cover seventy-nine percent of the project heavily front-loaded. Uh, it's a ten-year, it's a ten-year spend heavily front-loaded to de-risk this project. So a lot of that was not talked about originally when some of those dropped out. The LLC that will allow, uh, entities like, uh, non-taxing would be something like, uh, Rocky Mountain Power or similars to get in on this project, uh, were not allowed before that LLC was developed. So those have both happened since. Some of those have dropped out. Um, I'm just trying to kind of give you a little bit of a backdrop. So the solution was, was that we would not go forward with the thirteen point two million dollar budget full bore on all the, all the costs to get involved in this with the, the NRC. Um, the four million dollar budget is gonna focus on about three different things. It's gonna focus, uh, the, the majority of the focus is gonna be about a ninety thousand dollar per month, um, cost spend on subscription. And they're gonna go out looking at IOUs, they're gonna look at cooperatives, they're gonna look at other municipalities. And, uh, with the advent of the LLC and with the advent of the three point, or one point three billion dollar, uh, DOE grant, there's been a lot of, of, um, um, interest in this budget since then. And so that's gonna be a lot of the focus. Um, the other focus is there will be a one point four million dollar total spend on continuing the COLA spend, which is the combi- combined operating licensing agreement with the NRC that needs to keep going so we can keep a project, um, on task with the COD, commercial operation date. Operation Date. And then, uh, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is, is going to be, um, uh, expended on looking at transmission line upgrades with Rocky Mountain Power. And that'll be, there'll be network, network, um, upgrades and direct assigned upgrades. Next, uh, just to give you the, uh, difference between those, net, network upgrades will be paid for by Rocky Mountain Power. Direct assigned upgrades are, uh, costs that are assigned directly because of the project to us, but it requires a study, so that study will be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're, we're looking at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the transmission study, one-point-four million dollars for, um, the, um, uh, COLA work that needs to go on with the NRC, and then about a ninety-two thousand dollar per month, uh, spend on subscription upgrade. So what that basically states is that we went from a thirteen-point-two million dollar budget that put us on a one-point-nine million dollar hook to a four-million-dollar budget that now puts us on a six-hundred-and-ten thousand dollar, um, forward spend in combination with our three-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand two hundred forty-four dollars spend in our first phase that we've already got. So we're looking right now at about a one, just a hair over a million dollars, one-point-one million zero-zero-seven thousand two hundred forty-four dollar, uh, potential spend to, uh, January of twenty twenty-two. Um, uh, let me see if I can get my stuff all straight back in where we're at here. Uh, what that's basically saying is that, uh, most of the spending is gonna stop, we're, we're gonna just, we're gonna focus on just the necessities that we originally put a one-point-three million dollar cap in, in talking with the, with the, with the board here, with you as the board, and we are gonna be approximately two-hundred thousand, a little over two-hundred thousand dollars under that. So if we maintain the one-point-three million dollar, uh, spend cap, which is in the resolution that you have in front of you, we will be under that one, just a little over one million dollar, uh, spend anticipation that we're gonna see between now and January of twenty twenty-two, which will not affect our megawatt capacity with, that'll keep us at our fifteen-point-two-five-zero megawatts, will not affect the project, and will, um, uh, kind of keep with the remaining entities that are in, uh, today in the, in the meeting. And I apologize again, it's like the last meeting, we seem to have our meetings on Thursday just before council meetings, and we get our information at the last minute. But all the, the entities that are still in are very strong, very committed, their councils are very committed, they're very excited, they understand that this technology is the tech, technology that we need to move forward, and they want to see this project succeed. And, um, they've all made the adjustments needed to do this. Basically what this resolution says is that if, for whatever reason, uh, other entities get out or affect our, um, costs or our megawatts, that me as your representative, and now I'm gonna say me and also Jason Roberts, because at the time when you designated myself as being the representative, Jason Roberts was the, uh, City Finance Director, would cooperate together to make sure that we made the decisions, uh, to work with these contracts. But what this contract basically says is we can adjust kilowatts, um, as, as needed to keep within our budget, which would be the one-point-three million dollar spend cap that the, that the City Council agreed on, so that we, we keep within those parameters as this project moves forward. And as it sits right now with the new six-hundred-and-ten thousand dollar going forward spend with our old, we are at one million zero-zero-seven-two-four-four, which keeps us under that one-point-three million dollar spend cap. Apologize if I got too much in the weeds, I'm trying to keep it as simple as I can, and I am open for any questions that anybody has.
Dave, are you saying that, uh, if anything changes at this point and cost continues to go up, we've got about a two-hundred thousand dollar margin left?
At this point, at this point, we do with our pre-arranged spend cap, that is correct.
Dave, uh, in, in looking at the cities that have dropped out and the creation of this new LLC, do you envision that we're going to go to a broader market to get our subscription level where it needs to be?
That is exactly what I, yes, that is exactly what I anticipate with the LLC, that it will take it to a much broader market, take it so that we're not just looking at small municipalities within the UAMPS entities, that we're looking at larger joint-action agencies, we're looking at, um, um, uh, rural electric cooperatives, and also IOUs potentially like a Rocky Mountain Power or other investor-owned utilities. So absolutely right, correct.
Thank you.
And we're gonna spend, uh, ninety-two thousand dollars a month marketing that idea? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, and I'm sure that's, that's, uh, a nominal amount, approximate amount, but that is, when we look at the four million, the new four million dollar spend versus the thirteen-point-two million, the ninety-two thousand per month is, uh, an anticipated dedicated amount for subscription.
Does anybody have their finger on the pulse of that right now? Any idea how much interest there is? Were there people knocking on the door that couldn't come in? Or are any of the cities that pulled out considering coming back since the DOE started dumping money into it, or where, where are we at here?
I would anticipate that potentially some cities would want to come back in as they start to see the de-risking of this, if you will. Um, the other, if you, if you remember on our last meeting, we, um, we talked about several coal plants that were, um, looking at shutting down probably within the next five to eight years, and a lot of those are IOUs and co-ops that are in those. And I think with this LLC, um, not only are we anticipating them, but we are hearing, you know, I'll, I'll just throw one out right now, Farmington, New Mexico, with that big plant down there, uh, I believe it's San Juan Planet Camera, which one it is, it's getting really shut down. They have a high level of interest in this project. Um, there are several areas where coal plants are scheduled to shut down that are, um, um, highly interested in this, not only this project, but projects, subsequent projects such as this project.
But by the time the next off-ramp comes in twenty twenty-two, we will have a pretty good feeling if this is working to draw subscribers in and, uh, move, move forward with this, correct?
That, that would be my, that would be exactly my thoughts, is that this gives a lot of time for, I think, sinking in of the one-point-three-five-five billion-dollar DOE with the LLC with the participation. That will give us, that gives us a lot of time to look and see what the subscription change will be. Uh, obviously, since, uh, the ones that have dropped out, since it hasn't been the technology, since it hasn't been the, uh, concern of the, uh, um, joint-action agency to be able to handle this project, it's been all about subscription. So, um, with this change, uh, that, in my mind, to, to just be really frank, when I heard that the majority of the concern was, uh, subscription, I was more relieved. I was relieved that it wasn't about technology. I was relieved it was not about, um, the, you know, competency of the team that was put together to put this, this project up. It, I was, I was more relieved it was about subscription because to me, that was an easier fix, that was a more visual, let's see how this goes fix by making these changes. And you're absolutely correct, uh, Councilmember Olson, I, I, I believe by January twenty-two, we will have some very, uh, discreet evidence, uh, on the, on the subscription levels.
So for the residents of Brigham City, if we continue at this point, those that are anxious about it and feel like we ought to join the cities that have dropped out, if we continue up until January twenty twenty-two, uh, they will have a little bit more evidence as to what, I, so I, I'm asking, the, the concern that I get from the citizens in town is there are several that talk about previous power plants that were planned and lots of money was dumped into them and then they never came to, to be. Uh, that's the number one argument I hear. All of this has been tried before and it, and it never comes to be. Um, so, uh, for those that are concerned in that way, you think that there should be evidence in twenty twenty-two that this could go forward?
I would absolutely say yes to that, that there will be evidence whether this could go forward. And there's, there's actually probably some more information we can get out that I think that will be out next Tuesday anyway. Um, if you look at the average coal plant, it's gonna be shut down, um, they're anywhere from three-hundred megawatts to six-hundred megawatts, you know, so if you look at an average somewhere in between there, um, some of the concern, and, and the reason I bring this up is good, because some of the concern was we're looking at a seven-hundred-and-twenty megawatt plant, which, when you're talking a small modular reactor, um, seven-hundred-and-twenty megawatts is, is maybe or maybe not considered small. If you compare that to some of the coal plants that are slated to be shut down, and, and they're looking anywhere between three-hundred to six-hundred megawatt range, one of the things we asked UAMPS staff to go back and look at and talk to the new scale and floor is can we scale this plant down to match those kilowatts that these plants that are gonna be going out of service are? And what I think we're gonna see Tuesday, and this is, I mean, take it, take it as you will, but what I think what we're gonna see Tuesday is an announcement that, yes, we can take this down, we can take this down instead of a twelve-pack, we can take this plant down to a six-pack, and we're gonna be looking at approximately four-hundred-and-sixty megawatts. Um, there's an up rate, there's another up rate. If, if you remember, we started out at fifty megawatts per, per, uh, nuclear power module. Um, they're looking at the, uh, uh, design certification to potentially go up to sixty megawatts for, per, uh, nuclear power module. There, with technology advances, there's potential to go a little bit higher. So looking at what, and this was the, so, the Project Management Committee, which I am a board member of, we asked the staff to go back and look at what else we can do to make this project more attractable to subscription. And part of that was, was the size of it. And looking at this, um, scaling it and looking, and again, focus, focusing on our fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour, uh, which, which is, which has got to be our target, that is the absolute target on megawatt cost. They feel, and we will know by next Tuesday and Wednesday, if they can scale this back down to approximately a four-hundred-and-sixty megawatt, which will compete with a coal plant at the fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour, and if that's, and if that's the case, uh, when we, as, uh, I can't remember which one of you mentioned when we were talking about the other entities, uh, Councilmember Olson, I believe it was you, uh, with the LLC, that was part of their concern was the size of this and being able to subscribe it at a more, uh, coal-fired-sized, um, plant. And I believe that will happen, and I believe the way they're talking right now, they're very confident that the fifty-five dollar per megawatt hour target will be achieved. Even though we lose a little bit of economies of scales going to that, we will still meet our original target of that fifty-five megawatts.
Thank you, Dave. That's great information.
So Dave, if that happens, um, is that gonna im- impact the DOE's commitment to the project?
It will, it will to a certain extent. I think they, they're still pretty much tagged to that seventy-nine percent, seventy-nine, eighty percent, uh, target tag. Um, I know FLOR and New Scale are gonna try and push them up a little bit, but it will have some effect. I think the, the main focus we gotta look at is that the fifty-five dollar per megawatt hour, uh, will be the target regardless of which way that goes.
So does that, uh, by re- potentially reducing this, um, capacity, then does that impact our, um, impact our numbers in any way since the project's not gonna be as big? Will that lower the overall numbers, you know, across the board?
It, it will lower the, oh, excuse me.
No, I, I just was gonna say, did, did that question make sense?
No, you, no, it did make sense, and it, it will have a definite effect on the balance of plant, uh, when you're talking about the amount of uranium that's gonna be in a, a confined area, uh, it will affect the balance of plant. However, you do lose a little bit of, uh, economies of scales with that. So I think the two going down together, uh, we might lose just a touch. Um, you know, I, I think last time when, uh, I talked to you, we were looking, uh, with the economies of scales at a seven-hundred-and-twenty megawatt plant, fully subscribed, we were looking at forty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents a megawatt hour. Um, yeah, we might lose four to five dollars on that by going to, but going to a, to a smaller plant, but fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour is still a sweetheart of a deal in, uh, twenty-thirty, twenty-forty, twenty-fifty dollar, uh, you know, uh, looking at a carbon-free, you know, baseload product. So, um, I think fifty-five was our, you know, our main target, the thing that we need to kind of focus on, uh, you know, keeping around that. If we, if we lose the economic competitive test around that fifty-five, then obviously the six-pack won't work. And then we gotta go back to really focusing on the subscription for the seven-twenty, but they have a lot of confidence that, at the six-pack, uh, uh, configuration that, um, the fifty-five dollars can still be met.
Just, uh, I guess a follow-up question with what I just asked about the scale. Um, so our one point, our one-million-dollar commitment, would, would that, uh, will that potentially go down as well if, if this, if the project scaled back, I guess, is that?
What will happen is if the subscription amounts come up, our, our development costs will go down substantially. Every time subscription goes up, our development cost will go down, because it was respread amongst others. And so that's, that's what the anticipation of this, um, scaling is, and also the pause on the budget is. Those two, those two combinations are focused on getting the subscription up, which will then take our development costs down.
Okay, makes sense.
Any other questions to the resolution or anything related to the resolution?
I don't think so, that was very helpful, thank you.
Hopefully, Mary, you don't want me to read this, this is not as pretty and petite as the last one I got to read. I'll read it if you want me to, but it's, it's a, I, I think you all have a copy of it, you let me know.
Yeah, I think, I think we're okay. Let's account, is it, would the council like that red? Okay. Entertaining a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution, resolution authorizing and approving adjustment to the participants' entitlement share under the CFPP Power Cells Contract.
They have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Now we'll have a roll call vote, we'll start with Councilmember Troxel.
Robbins, anye.
Josai.
Tom, zai.
Aldens, anye.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, before we go any further, I neglected to excuse Councilmember Bott, he is not, was not able to be with us tonight. Uh, finished business? Consideration of an ordinance regulating transit law facility, and Paul Larson's gonna talk to us about that.
Um, so this is an ordinance that you've looked at before, we looked at it a, a couple of months ago, and, uh, you had some questions and, and we've gone through and are now ready to present, uh, back to you. I believe, uh, Coltman is there, if I'm not mistaken, I think, uh, he was going to lead this discussion.
Thank you, Paul. City Council, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Um, this is not the first time you've seen this ordinance, I believe this might be the third time that it's been before you. Um, before I, I get into the discussion about and answer any questions you might have, I would like to, to, uh, recognize the work of Paul Larson in putting this together, recognize the work of Chief Nelson and Officer Ryan Hill in putting this together, they've made fantastic contributions for us to, to get this ordinance to you. This ordinance has been in, been in the works- This ordinance has been in, been in the works for approximately two years. It was the summer of 2018 and discussions with Officer Ryan Hill where we began putting this to work. And I think it's important to discuss the inception of this ordinance. So the council understands the, the purpose behind it and the reason why this is before you. The purpose of this ordinance is to create, create greater cooperation and partnership between the hotels and motels in our city and our local police department. We are reducing crime and creating a safe and healthy environment for those who come to our city and use our lodging facilities. This ordinance is not intended to be punitive in any way, but to foster that relationship between our police department and the hotels and motels within our city so that we can, we can achieve a common goal. In regards to the ordinance, the language, the ordinance and authority is unique. And I believe in August, when this was before you, that was discussed. And I know you've had rent communication from, from hotels and saying that this is, this is a novel ordinance. In part, that's true and in another part, that's not. We are not a unit in presenting you in an ordinance with a tier structure. Now, within the state of Utah, that is, there's various cities that we've looked at throughout the United States to utilize the tier structure when it comes to hotels and motels. Additionally, the, the preliminary portion of this ordinance, the standards that we were asking to be included, that language in large part was modeled after Ogden City and St. George in regards to inspections, in regards to, and in regards to the licensing scheme that we, we've included in this proposed ordinance. I want to be clear that in, in our review of this, we believe that this passes any kind of legal or constitutional muster. Indeed, back in May of 2019, with before this council and, and some previous council members, it was the recommendation of council member Peterson to have this reviewed by outside legal counsel. I will say that over that past year, we've made various modifications to this ordinance. We've reduced some of the more stringent requirements. We've tried to accommodate the hotel motel owners and that, owners in that fashion. But when this ordinance was reviewed in May of 2019 by Matt Church, he provided a letter that I hope the council has that says in his review, this would pass any kind of constitutional muster or legal review. In the most recent city council, as I, as I referenced in August, there were several concerns that were raised. And one was raised by council member Troxel, which I thought was very good, a, a very thoughtful comment. And that was ways in which this ordinance can protect victims of domestic violence who are staying at a, at a lodging facility. And to accommodate that, we've, we've added language that calls for service would exclude victims of domestic violence who have, who have a protective order in place, a stalking injunction in place. Those calls for service or those calls for law enforcement assistance would not count against a hotel or a motel for the purposes of this ordinance. There was also the discussion in August about references to RV. We've removed that in its entirety. Indeed, when we started working on this ordinance back in 2018, in the, in the, in the time period between, the city has already passed an RV ordinance that's addressing chapter 29 of our, of our city ordinances. In regards to language addressing sanitation and cleanliness, that was also raised, I believe by council member Bott. We've removed that as well. Again, in a, to take consideration of very thoughtful comments and concerns and also the comments and concerns we've received, received from hotels and motels. One other substantial change that has occurred since August is the inspection process. The inspection process will only be once, once a year. When a hotel or motel renewed their business license, they will have the opportunity to set up and schedule an inspection with the city. Previous iterations of this ordinance had allowed our police chief or designee on his behalf or a code enforcement official to do random inspections. That's no longer the case. So hotels will actually have the ability to schedule their own inspections. And that will only occur once a year when they renew their license. And I think with that, I'll turn to you with any questions you might have.
Has there been any more knowledge on the cost of the permit?
I, I don't think that's, that's even discussed in the ordinance. I think it's the standard business license fee. We're not trying to add an additional fee. Although cities are entitled to, to, to pass an ordinance allowing them to, to to, to enforce a transient lodging tax that's allowed under the state code. This, this does not have anything to do with that. And as far as I'm aware and based on the language of the ordinance, there wouldn't, would not be an additional fee for a lodging permit. That would be the standard business license fee that we charge anybody.
So, and maybe it's in here and I just can't see it because I'm so nearsighted. But is there any place in here for the notification and appeals process?
Yes, that's a very good question. On the back portion of this, let me open to the ordinance itself and I can direct you to the specific process. The 14
Oh, 16.
Period zero, nine zero and 100 and 110 that all references the appeal process. That appeal process is the same that we have in our code for business license denials or revocations. The appeal process would be the same. And in fact, we've allowed motel and hotel owners that are, who are placed in a tier structure that the police chief will provide them notice of their calls for service annually. And they'll have the, the ability as well to appeal that placement. So if they feel like they shouldn't be placed in tier two or tier one, they can appeal that, that placement. They can also appeal any revocation or denial of a business license under our appeal process outlined in our code.
So you're looking at having this just kind of be like a yearly thing?
Correct.
Not an ongoing adding points, changing the tiers throughout the year as soon as you hit a number of calls?
Correct. So that, so there's two.
issuing citations type thing.
There's, the look at this ordinance is that it's almost, it, it has two structures. The first portion of the ordinance addresses minimum standards that we would like hotels and motels to follow. Some of that has to do with extended stays. The issue that was raised by the police was, was having individuals who were staying in hotels longer than 30 days. In fact, we've had feedback from hotels that that could be problematic when you have individuals that stay there for two or three. Then they, then they assume some tenancy rights and require them to be evicted. So to accommodate both concerns from the police and hotels and hotels, we've had a language in there that would restrict an individual from staying in a hotel for longer than 30 days with some very important exceptions such as being placed there by a charitable organization or an insurance for a family in distress program or for those who are working in our city or, or our community and are here for a long-term basis. They would be the exception to that rule. Having said that, the first portion of this ordinance, try to answer your question, council member Troxel, is, is simply standards that we, we have and we would apply to hotels and motels. The second portion is the tier structure. No hotels or motels are immediately placed in that structure. In fact, so there's no requirements, no additional requirements that are imposed upon them. In fact, my understanding is we have no hotels or motels that would even hit the first tier of this ordinance. It's only after you have those calls, one call per unit and above for one year are you placed in that tier structure and that's reviewed annually. So theoretically after, in year two, you could go up or you could be removed entirely from that tier one. In tier one, it's important to note as well is that that not place additional requirements on the hotels. What it does is it offers services from our police. Our police can provide training on detecting crime and on share information on, on crime occurring in the area. But it really places no burden on a hotel or any additional requirements when they're in that first tier structure. And council member Troxel, I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, the only, I can think the really real question is that on the, the 30 day stay, to me, that's going to take a, a constant checking to see if who's staying longer than 30 days. And I'm not sure how that would fall within unless it's just a matter of a year. Then you're going to go back and look through the records. And that's like a past experience that, that, you know, maybe viable or not, but would they have the, you know, the right documentation or whatever to justify that without an ongoing, somebody checking the records every month to see if anyone's staying 30 days?
That would be something that primarily the hotels and motels would monitor. There would be nothing absent a subpoena or a search warrant that would allow the city, the police chief or code enforcement official to, to go into a hotel and demand that they produce a registry. We, they limit their state for guests to be less than 30 days. Based on, on kind of the research that went into this, we tend to see those who stay longer. That that does foster an environment of crime and criminal activity. So as I pointed out, there are exceptions to that, certainly families in distress. Those who are there with charitable assistance or government or religious assistance would be allowed to stay longer. And again, those who are in the community working on a project that need to stay here longer would certainly be allowed to do that.
Currently BRAG is, is starting to have a, a waiting period for their families in crisis because of funding purposes. And so there are families that are having to stay longer than 30 days before they can actually be eligible for BRAG services. And so I don't know how a family could, you know, we, we put in these charitable organizations. And so is it a 30 days once they get in with the charitable organization like BRAG or something? If they're on the waiting list, is that?
I think as long as they could provide. And, and again, reading this is that, that doesn't really get into this, we don't really specify that. We just simply state that families that are in distress or any other of the exceptions that apply, they are not under that same restriction. They'll only be there for 30 days.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. I guess first I, and maybe I should have done some, some due diligence. How many of our hotels and motels are we having of all the units or all the facilities that we have, how many are we having calls and problems? Is it across the board with all of them? What, do we have any that help us better understand this ordinance? And I guess for me to understand if it's real quick critical. I, I know the outside council posed the question, you know, is this the type of ordinance that we want to, to be dealing with? I think that's what their words were. So I'm just curious what kind of call volume we're getting from, from each location in the city. Do we have any information on that?
I'll defer to Paul Larson on that question, council member Farr.
I, I have a spreadsheet that I can share. It's got three years of data. The first two years, there was one operation that entered tier one. We have six months of data from 2020 that we analyzed. And based on those six months, none of the operations were in tier one. I can put that up on the screen if you'd like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
Have you felt a good deal of cooperation from the hotel that was put into your one? A sense of cooperation?
I, I want to be careful getting into specifics and, and discussing specific hotels or motels.
Did they get out of tier one? Okay, okay.
Yeah, my understanding is there are no hotels or motels that are currently in tier one.
And the number of calls went down?
My understanding over the past year, that's correct.
Okay.
So this is the spreadsheet. The graph that you see is 2018 data. The tier one starts at one call per, per unit per year. That's this line right here and you can see most, all of the operations except one were well below that line. In 2019, this is the data and here's that, that line. And for the first.
I can't see how many is that, is that there on the vertical? Is that two, three?
So one call per, per unit per year is right here.
Okay.
So that's 2019 and this is 2020. And this is that line here. So you can see that if, if, if you looked at the first six months and what we did is we took the first six months data that we had and prorated those across a year equivalent. And so at that point, none of the operations were into tier one.
So it doesn't, I guess in my mind, it, it doesn't appear like we're having that many problems that would justify having an ordinance or am I incorrect in that assessment?
Paul, would you go over the scale in 2018 one more time? That got a little confusing for us to see the numbers.
Yeah, and, and that's part of the problem is the scale moves between the years because of the numbers. This is the one per unit per year line right here.
Okay.
And 2019.
So what was it? Was it two or three?
What's up? So it was 1.65. You know, the other operations were down in the, below point four. And that's, again, that's 2018. Each year is somewhat different. This is 2019 and this is 2020. Again, that's six months of data prorated for on a 12 month equivalent.
The, the attorney representing, I guess, the hotels, locations there stating that we just, we had a situation where we had multiple calls in one period of time and an officer just got tired of addressing that. Was, is there any truth to that or is that made up?
I would defer to the police department, but that's not my understanding.
Okay.
Alden, as I understand it, even if that is the case, that doesn't put them in any tier. And even that first tier isn't punitive. It's, it's an invitation by the police department saying, we're getting called here quite a bit. What can we do to help you reduce the number of calls? Because as I see it, I, I would love for the record to show that I am not in favor of having to pass an ordinance like this. But if there is a, and, and the reason why is just because I wish people would just govern themselves. I don't, I don't feel like we should have to nitpick every last detail of proper behavior in a community. But when there is an obvious drain on community resources in a specific business arena and like, like they were saying earlier, we're not trying to target a specific business. It's just that there is high, a high rate of crime in the transient lodging area. And again, it takes an awful lot if, say this hotel has 50 rooms at one call per room per year, that means that there's a police officer there every single week. If I had a police officer at my office every single week, I'd end up in jail. I mean, that's just the fact of the matter. So I think, I think that the rules on. I mean, that's just the fact of the matter. So, um, I think, I think that the rules on this ordinance are very loose and generous, especially considering that at this moment, it doesn't affect any of the businesses. Uh, but if there is no accountability for how often the police are showing up at some of these businesses, then unfortunately, it seems like at times it's been taken advantage of.
Yeah, and I, I, uh, I, I guess getting back to, uh, I think it was, uh, Church, uh, in his comments, um, uh, is this going to prohibit, uh, other hotels from wanting to come into our community? Given the restrictions, potential restrictions or ordinance that they now have to abide by? Is that gonna be a problem for other businesses to wanna come in, do you think?
My own opinion is that, that those decisions will be made based on the market and whether there's a market share to be had here in lodging. Uh, we get inquiries from time to time and as vacancies grow, or excuse me, as, as vacancies decrease and there appears to be more demand for lodging in the area, I think you'll see more hotels.
I would think, uh, and again, this is my personal opinion, uh, even at tier one, which again is not punitive, any sort of franchise hotel would probably shut down that branch if they had that much time happening at their branch.
I, I did have one other question and I, I can, I've been looking through it and I can't find it. I should have made it know. But it, it talked about, um, if someone was, uh, a location was suspended or put on warning or something like that, it was, uh, it was up to the police chief, I think the community director to determine whether they would be reinstated or not. And I'm just wondering, is, is there some criteria that, uh, is in place to, to determine that? Or is it just an, up to the individual to decide if that's, if they're gonna be allowed to permit back their business license? And I can't, um, I can't find where it was that I read that, but I-
Councilmember Farr, that's on fourteen, uh, period sixteen, period zero nine five. And, and if I can answer your question, it would, what's required of a, of a hotel for reapplication or re, renewal after a period of suspension or revocation is that they must present a corrective action plan. That's simply the only requirement that's placed upon them. And then that is submitted to the police chief and the, the fire chief and the community and economic development department for review.
What, what was that number again?
It's fourteen period sixteen period zero nine five. It's the second to last page in your packet.
Yeah, this packet's two hundred plus pages, so I'd say-
Uh, second to last page of the ordinance, I apologize.
No, you're good. I just- Oh, okay.
Go to the next page.
So it's saying to, uh, correct its, uh, action plan like you stated to a reasonable satisfaction of police chief, fire chief, community development. Okay. Is that subjective at all? Do you think, or is that, I mean, is that? I, I just, I guess I have a hard time with this ordinance. I think we're just, you know, I, I'm not trying to pick everything apart. I, I appreciate what our police chief and all of our officers do, but I just wonder if we're being, you know, I think we have plenty of laws that, you know, if we have problems, people can be arrested if it's nuisance or whatever, that we can resolve problems without having to create an ordinance to dictate what a business can and can't do or should or shouldn't do.
Alden, and my, and I, I kind of, I do agree with you. I, I don't understand the, the need for, you know, additional codes. Um, I do appreciate that the, that there was a removal of the effect that it would have on the actual residents and, and the low income people and the health inspections, you know, by the economic development and, and that type of mud. Because that does kind of create, uh, it does impact those people when you start dictating those types of things. And according to my research, I mean ACLU has, has done a lot of, of, gone to court times for those people that have been adversely affected by these types of laws. Um, and so I appreciate that, those, a lot of those were taken out. My, what I would like to ask is what in this new ordinance or code, I mean, helps the police? I mean, how much are you really being impacted right now with those extra calls to that, to those places? We're kind of a small town and great force. And so I'm, I don't know if we're being so dramatically impacted or is there something in this ordinance that makes it better, easier for you to arrest criminals?
I have an opinion on that if I can share that. I think what it's doing is it's holding the business owners accountable for what's happening on their properties. It's not necessarily assisting the police. It's making it more difficult to facilitate an environment of crime. Uh, the, the purpose of it is for the city to, uh, motivate business owners to reduce the amount of crime happening on their property if they can help it. And I think, I, like, like I've said a couple of times, I think that the, the tiers are very generously set. I, I don't think that this is putting undue burden on anybody. Uh, if these, if, and, and like I said earlier too, I, I'm with you, uh, Councilmembers Farr and Troxel. I'd love to not have to pass something like this, but if there is an environment of crime that's being facilitated or, uh, at, even at the very least, having a blind eye to it on the part of business owners, there's got to be some form of accountability. Every other business owner in town is held to liability for crimes that are committed on their property to some extent.
So what is making it so that lodging facilities aren't being held accountable according to the laws that we already have? And the codes that we already have? What's stopping a police officer from going into a, a room that there's criminal activity going on and?
But let me ask you a question, Councilmember Troxel. Um-
And I'm not saying that, that, that these are reasons to go against it. I guess I just don't have that information specifically related to Brigham City in order to justify the need.
And my thing too is, so you've talked about those people that, uh, that, that, uh, that, that, that aren't able to go somewhere and they need a place to stay and all that thing. But if, if we have a, a facility that keeps violating laws or they keep having people that are there that are, um, of a nature that could cause issues to those around them, isn't our responsibility to provide safe, I mean, if the hotel-
That's why, that's why my question is what-
If the hotel's not willing to provide that-
What does this code, how does this code?
It, it makes it so-
Kind of hold them accountable.
It makes the business owner lose their license if they don't take an engaged effort in controlling the amount of crime on their property.
But, but you're, you're basically telling, telling us that a business owner is supposed to control the activity and everything that their residents are doing. That's, that's what you're saying?
No.
But it is?
No, it's not. If there is an unreasonable amount of crime being performed on a property, that means the owner is turning a blind eye. Not.
So if, if there's crimes that are being committed, then those individuals should be arrested and it shouldn't be the responsibility of the property owner to make sure that they're arrested?
I think what we're looking at here is, if you'll remember, calls are not considered if the property owner makes the call. Um, this does definitely, this does give incentive for the property owners to be proactive on their side. And anything that, they can have as many calls as they want, come from management, come through management at the front desk to report any suspicious activity and, and that, that's not a problem here. That's what we want is to work together on this. So-
So, so we're, we're wanting them to do that, but then if there's a problem, then we're gonna revoke their license?
No.
That's, that's, that's what we're saying.
The calls that management makes are not counted against them. That's the ordinance.
Okay.
It's calls from tenants. Say that somebody in room seventeen knows that there's a drug going down in room eighteen and they call the police.
Okay. Or, so then, then that call should come in, the police should go and arrest that eighteen and that should take care of the problem?
Absolutely. Now, again, the bottom tier is one call per room per year. So you're saying that if there is a drug deal going down in every single room at some point during the year and the police go and arrest them, that the business owner has no liability in that?
Well, but I'm, I don't know that the business owner, uh, is going to know that every room is, uh, during the course of the year is gonna have a drug deal take place. That's, I mean, the, 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 uh, owner doesn't know that that's gonna take place, do they?
No, no, I agree. But if they are aware of something happening on their property and they report it, then it doesn't count against them.
I, I disagree. I, if it's happening fifty times in a year, they're probably some form of harboring, so making it easy to happen.
And, and I wouldn't disagree with that.
Again, facilitating crime, not necessarily causing it.
And I think property owners have a good feel, councilmembers, when somebody comes into their place of what person, I mean, not that we're stereotyping everybody, but I think as we have people come in, we can tell who we're renting to.
If, if I can chime in real, real quickly and I apologize, and, and just to be clear, the city, city attorney's office makes no recommendation as to whether this is a worthwhile policy. That is, is this council's job. What I would say is that the tier structure acts in a large part to be preventative. So as Councilmember Holson has pointed out, that first tier, what it does is it allows the police to extend that hand and say, let us help you to identify crime, let us tell you, let us share information with you about crime occurring in the area. If crime exceeds one point five calls per unit for a year, then we are asking that they take remedial efforts to reduce the crime such as illuminating the parking lot, illuminating the public areas of, of the hotel, having video surveillance with the intent to deter crime going forward. At the highest tier, we ask that they have an armed security guard, again, for the purpose of deterring crime in a place where crime has already become fostered, if that makes sense. Because at that point, you have a significant uptick in criminal activity that's occurring on the premises.
The, another problem that arises as far as the community viewpoint, if you've got an environment where crime is very consistently there, you're not getting reputable people renting those rooms. You're getting desperate people renting those rooms. People who are on a charity, uh, a charity check. And if there's a lot of crime happening, those people who are already struggling because of financial issues, all of them are put in a toxic environment where their children aren't safe, where, uh, who knows what can happen on that property? And so I think that this is equal parts protection for other tenants as well as holding business owners accountable.
Now, I don't disagree with that, but I, I just think we're, I think it's just not right that we're trying to dictate to a property owner or a business owner what they should and shouldn't be doing. I just don't think that's right. Would you, would you like someone to come and tell you that you've got a lights, lights up and, uh, cameras and telling you what you should and shouldn't be doing, Joe, as a business owner?
The government tells me every day what I can and can't do.
Well, that, that's true. That's true.
I, uh, but I, I do understand your point. And like I said, I would love to never have to pass an ordinance like this. I don't think it should be necessary to have to do this. I think people should govern themselves. And I, as a business owner, if I saw a trend of crime, my property, bet your buttons, I'd put up security cameras and hire a security guard if I needed to, without the city coming in and making me do it. The problem is we've got some environments that can pop up. I'm not saying that they are, but there, there is the potential or has been in the past in some way, shape or form, an environment that has popped up that is not being monitored and is not being cared for. And it is creating an unsafe environment for the people that stay there and for the businesses around them. Uh, and we don't want a crime hotspot in our city. Like Councilmember said, we're a small city. There's no reason that we need to have a crime hotspot in the middle of Brigham City or even on its edge. Sorry, I do have a strong opinion of, of, obviously.
No, and I, I respect it and, and I, I think there's a, you know, a, a lot of truth in what you're saying. I, I think, do, is it, is it up to us as councilmembers to dictate what a business can, can't, should or shouldn't do? And I, I just, I, I have a hard time with that. As much as I don't disagree with what you're, you know, the, the whole point in, in all of this is, no, we don't, we don't want crime in our community and if we can, you know, curb it, I think we should. I just don't know if this is the, the best way to do that. Um, you know, to, to create an ordinance to make people do certain things. I, I just, I'm having a hard time with that.
And I, I understand your position for sure.
Is it, is it my understanding that, um, that nothing in our general business licensing that has to do with crime or whatever else? And we don't really, and, and there was, there is a confusion between the rentals and landlord laws and then the regular business licensing laws. And so the, the need for a transient ordinance, it felt like you needed to have a separate to include, so, because it wasn't addressed in either one of those. Okay.
To address the specifics in a unique nature, that's correct.
And I, I noticed reading through that, it, it does kind of mimic a lot of the business licensing ordinance that we have already in some, in a lot of the paragraphs. And because that you took out the, the health and safety type standards and inspection, is, is there a way that we could just, I noticed that you have, you know, certain, to just include that in the business licensing of something of, of business owners that have found, that are found to, you know, not like, I mean, if you had crime, if you all of a sudden found out that somebody set up after hours in your flat back parking lot at a specific time to do drug deals and stuff like that, yeah, you would take care of it. But we don't, but the city couldn't come after you, it'd take away your business license because you didn't take care of it. You would just do that on your own.
If, so if somebody, what this ordinance is addressing, if I understand it correctly, which I think I do, if somebody set up a one-time drug deal in my parking lot, you're absolutely right. The police would not have any position to come after me for that. I've got no control over that. But if there is routinely drug dealing happening on my premise, on my property and I don't do anything about it, then I think, absolutely, I think the police would have a place to come and ticket me. and I don't do anything about it, then I think, absolutely, I think the police would have a place to come and ticket me. Uh, in my practice, as a, as a medical care provider, if one of my employees injures a patient, I'm held for that. If, uh, if one of my employees continually does that, I can actually be charged with felony neglect in my clinic.
So what, what I'm, what I'm saying is that it, it shouldn't just target the trans, that, you know, the lodging, that it, it, that...
It should be to every business in town?
A- any business should not be compliant in criminal activities, they know and they know.
That's what I asked when we, when we tabled this, is that, I, I, I think this is probably an okay place to start, but really, in my opinion, this should be an ordinance that covers all of our businesses. If we have a business that routinely sees problems that the police department is continuing, the fire department or, or any reason, uh, I know, I think our fire department does charge, if they get routine smoke detector triggers, they, they charge them for those visits, and I, and, um, I think that this is something that, that, uh, I think this is a, a good start, um, but once again, when I tabled this last meeting, I, I think this should be for all businesses.
That's, that's my feeling.
And yet, we did actually look into that. And looked into, what if we did broaden this to try to make it to a very broad base of businesses in Brigham City? Um, Paul will know roughly how many business licenses we issue a year. But as the businesses are different, obviously we can't apply a per-room standard, or even a per-square-foot standard, depending on what businesses it is. We didn't think that was fair when we looked at it. It became, it got to the point that we were positive that with our current staffing, and maybe not additional full-time staff, would we be able to do this if we were to actually look at every single type of business there was in town and try to, a- and try to see it? We were seeing it in one specific type of industry, and this did address our problem, is what was thought by staff.
It makes sense to me that if we were to see a trend of crime in other businesses, then we would address that as the turnarose. But yes, I agree with you, it should apply, apply evenly to the community, and I think it will, should we see a trend in other businesses.
And to end of that point, we did discuss that, and without data, without any information that would lead us to believe that this is an issue, we're not sure that we would have past rational basis review on such a law without being able to support numbers and calls for service and things of that nature, and as Jason Athley pointed out, there's a, there's a vast difference in regulating a facility that provides overnight lodging and perhaps for several weeks at a time versus, uh, a fast food restaurant.
Well, Mayor, I'd make the motion that we approve the resolution authorizing and approving adjustment, uh, the ordinance regulating transient lodging facilities.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote, and we'll start with Truxell.
At this point in time, I say Robinson now.
Joe's an aye.
Tom's aye.
Alden's an aye.
Mayor Vincent is, is, uh, an aye. Okay, very good. We need to adjourn to a redevelopment agency meeting.
Does that require a motion?
Yes.
I move that we adjourn to redevelopment, uh, to RDA meeting.
Second.
The motion is second. We are now into a redevelopment agency meeting. I need approval of the August twenty twenty minutes.
So moved.
And seconded.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Need a roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilmember Olson.
Joe's aye.
Tom's aye.
Alden's aye.
Okay, very good. Yeah, resolution approving form for interlocal agreements for eleven hundred south community development project area. Paul Larson's gonna talk to us about that.
Um, as we mentioned in the city council meeting, um, this item is actually a, the resolution adopts all of the interlocal agreements with other taxing entities, subject to the approval by those taxing entities, and then authorizes the mayor to sign those individually as they happen and, uh, fill in certain details on those as they come along. Um, I don't know if you have any particular questions. I know Adam Long is here. Uh, he's the drafting attorney on, uh, these documents, and if you have any questions, um, Adam would be a good resource. Um, the same thing applies to this, uh, form, we would be adding a map at the end as exhibit to each of these and, uh, the same code correction that we talked about with the county agreement, or, excuse me, with the, uh, city agreement.
So Adam's the one that we need to blame for the last forty-five pages of the, uh, packet, this?
Yeah, that, uh, well, yes, that will be, the last item is the participation agreement, and, uh, part of the exhibit with, the exhibits with that participation agreement is drafts of each of the individual participa- or, excuse me, interlocal agreements, so, uh, it does get a little lengthy. Uh, looks like you're on mute, Adam.
Oh, I hea- I heard that I got paid by the page, so that's why it's so long.
I see. You're, you're a wise attorney then. Mayor, I would, are we ready for a?
Yes, we are.
Or, okay. I would move that we approve, uh, the form of the interlocal agreements for eleven hundred south, uh, community development project area.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we will have a roll call vote, and we'll start with Alden.
Al, excuse me, Alden's an aye.
Robinson aye.
Joe's aye.
Tom's aye. Okay, thank you very much. The consideration of approval of interlocal agreement between Brigham City Corporation and Brigham City Redevelopment Agency for the eleven hundred south community development project area.
And this is essentially the mirror image of the first item, so the city council approved this agreement in, in the city council meeting. This is now the redevelopment agency's approval of the same agreement in the redevelopment agency meeting.
Well, I move that we approve the form, or, or the interlocal agreement between Brigham City Corporation and Brigham City RDA for the eleven south community development project area.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we will start with roll call vote, and we'll start with Alden.
Alden's an aye.
Robinson aye.
Joe's aye.
Tom's aye. Okay, thank you very much. Number four, consideration of approval of participation agreement of Brigham City Crossing Development Project, Paul Larson.
Okay. This is the, the final item, uh, of all of these tonight, is the, uh, interlocal agreement with the developer of the, uh, Brigham Crossing project. It is lengthy, again, like Alden said, uh, part of that is, is there's a fair amount of language, uh, protecting the agency and the city, uh, but also, uh, each of the, when they're finally executed with the individual taxing entities, then those agreements will be attached as exhibits to this agreement as well. Um, so this agreement would provide for reimbursement of the developer for infrastructure costs as part of the Brigham Crossing development. It also provides for reimbursement to the city for the costs of the, uh, eleven hundred west intersection. So as tax increment comes in, uh, the first dibs on that, if you will, will be the city for, to recoup the cost of that intersection, and then after that, uh, reimbursements can occur. There's a list of the re- of the eligible reimbursements at the end of the agreement, and that would occur over the length project area. And Adam, I don't know if there's anything else that, uh, that I've left out that you'd want to mention?
I, you pretty well covered it, um, just as a very, very high-level overview. Uh, as Paul said, this is just reimbursing certain categories of infrastructure improvements. So essentially culinary water, sewer, roads, and then streetlights and landscaping in public rights of way. Um, and that reimbursement obligation only exists to the extent that tax increment is generated from the development. So, you know, hypothetically, the developer puts in a million dollars of, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, but the project never gets built. Um, you know, the agency has no reimbursement obligation at that point, uh, because no tax increment is generated. And we also have some minimum, sort of minimum performance thresholds in here before this obligation really comes into being, uh, just to make sure that the agency and the city are really getting, you know, essentially getting what they bargained for out of this deal. So the goal here is to leave all the risk on the developer, you know, so the developer's the one putting all the money in upfront, and then we will, you know, assuming everything goes as planned, reimburse for these certain infrastructure improvements over, you know, however long it takes, um, for the duration of the interlocal agreements.
Paul, do we normally enter into development agreements for landscaping stuff?
Um, you mean participation agreements?
Yeah.
Um, i- in, in this instance, because what we're talking about are improvements in the public right-of-way, uh, that's what this would, and, and each participation agreement is unique in what it's accomplishing. Uh, in this case, it's all tied to public infrastructure in the right-of-way.
That'd be like the garden, the community garden, there are these in between those two roads, I think, probably.
Is, is that, would that be right, Tom, or Paul, that that community garden, is that what, that would in?
Let me scroll down to-
I think it was called the community garden, if I'm not mistaken.
So the list includes culinary water infrastructure, sanitary sewer improvements, road infrastructure, including without limitation, bridges and, and underpasses, and then streetlight, street lighting and landscaping within public rights of way. So that would be basically the park strips. The, uh, the green space, the, the, the sort of park area to me is more of a, a project, uh, improvement. I, that would not actually be part of the right-of-way. That would be an improvement.
Is, is this normal, Paul? I've never, I've never heard of this being asked for tax increment money back for the development of the landscape park strip.
Um, I, I can speak to that probably. I've done lots of these. Um, it's certainly not in every one, but it's really not uncommon when you're talking about, you know, essentially paying for the, you know, the public road infrastructure. Uh, you know, that said, uh, this list is, is really up for discussion and, and is determined by the agency board here tonight.
It, it just seems a little different, uh, than ones we've done in the past. I'm, I'm all for helping with sewer water roads stuff, but it seems like when we get into
Mm-hmm.
trees and grass, that, that maybe that's part of the development process and, and not, but that's, it's just striking me as, as different than what we've normally seen, so that's the only reason I asked.
Yeah. And this is, this is fairly unique from any other agreements that we've done. Primarily, we've done agreements that relate to uh, industrial projects.
So then are we responsible for that landscaping, for maintenance and everything?
No. This would be similar to, uh, any other development in town where the, the park strip landscaping is the responsibility of the adjacent landowner.
Maybe it's because we're putting in that roundabout that Mark Thompson wanted so badly, maybe that's what we're paying for. Councilmember Thompson. Who's referred to several times again?
Yeah, still near and dear.
He's still here, still with him, very good.
So Tom, do you want that to be a, an item of discussion to?
I, I don't know what the dollar amount is, I don't know if it's, um, it, it's the only thing in this that kind of reached out and grabbed me as being different, and so I just, I'm not sure, uh, how big of an issue it is, I, it didn't, it didn't seem normal to me.
Was that something that the developer requested, or was that just something that was put in just because?
I think it, it's, it's part of the developer's request and, and the discussion we've had with the participation agreement being limited to the, the public infrastructure, the right-of-way development, and, and that was considered to be part of it. Um, it's a good point that, that, and it's a good question whether, e- even though it is landscaping that's in the public right-of-way, it would not be uh, under our ordinances, the city's, uh, responsibility for maintenance, that would be the developer's responsibility, or the landowner, uh, uh, of the property. But that's an item, if, if it needed to come off, we could take that back to the developer and, and indicate that, uh, the agency wants to restrict it to more of the hard infrastructure.
Does that include, I, we, this is new ground, so forgive me, Adam, uh, the, the roundabout, who has maintenance, I mean, once you sell off all these lots and this property's fully developed, uh, who maintains that public right-of-way in the middle of the road? Roads on both sides, the roundabout specifically?
That would, to me, that would probably be a function of when the development plans are approved. Uh, a lot of ri- a lot of roundabouts, traffic circles do become maintenance responsibility of the city because they're part of the street. So that, that one piece probably would be something the city would need to maintain. But that would be true wherever roundabouts get built around the city.
Yeah. I, I guess what I'm thinking is, is I think the development, or the participation agreement should, should include the, and those things maintained by the city, um, and if the roundabout is that landscape that's included in that roundabout would, uh, be included in that, then I'm okay with those expenses being included in that, but, but I don't think we want to start down the road of, of a, of the city paying, uh, for the development of curb, or sidewalk, park strip areas and landscaping in general.
And I, I think we could take that back to the developer and, and just indicate that's something that the, the agency doesn't want to participate in.
So I, I guess I would make a motion to approve the participation agreement with the exception of uh, further discussion as far as the landscaping issue is concerned.
I'll second that.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Just a clarification on, on-
Yeah, I, I think, I need to clarify that motion. I, I think we've, I, I think I would like to at this point just exclude landscape, um, minus the landscape in the roundabout, maybe. I think that, if that's gonna be maintained by the city, then that's a different story, but-
Yeah, that, that was my question, if, if the roundabout could be included.
Clear enough?
Yeah.
I think so.
My second stand.
There's no further discussion? We'll start with a roll call vote, we'll start with Councilmember Olson.
Joe's an aye.
Tom's aye.
Alden's an aye.
Robinson aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
We need to go back into a regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. We need to entertain a motion to close our council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote, I guess. We'll start with Councilmember Olson again.
Joe's aye.
Tom's aye.
Alden's-
Robinson aye.
Thank you so much, appreciate you being here tonight. No possession.